Bring this meeting, the City Commission, to order. Dr. Hill, if you could give us our indication.
Let us pray. Holy and merciful God, we approach you this evening with gratitude in our hearts for the beauty of this great day. And we give thanks for the freedom to gather here in this place and the care for the business of this great community. We call upon you, O God, to provide our city's leaders with the gift of your divine wisdom and insight, and provide in and through them a vision to govern in the light of faith. Forgive us, O Lord, when we do not follow your will, when we break your laws, when we have not loved our neighbors, have not heard the cry of our fellow citizens. We pray that you would set us straight on your path of hope and purpose for this great city. Bless now our City Commission members, our city manager and clerk, and all employees of our city, and grant us the strength to persistently seek the things that endure and to grow ever richer in that love which is the life of all people. Through our holy Creator, we pray. Amen.
Commissioner Haines, if you could do our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes? Or do we have any...
Roll.
Okay, I'm sorry. Hold, roll.
Mr. Rhodes?
Here.
Mr. Haines?
Here.
Mr. Bowers?
Here.
Mr. Hadden?
Here.
Mayor, may I?
Mayor, approach him. I move that we approve the minutes of July 22nd, August 12th, August 26th, and August 29th, as presented.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mayor, approach him.
Yes. Okay. Are there any ceremonial items? Okay. Citizen comments. This is an opportunity where citizens have five minutes to just speak about city items, and just state your name, and you have five minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Maria Ernst. You all probably know that by now. I'm here on behalf of Frankfurt Fairness to just thank you all again as a body for taking up the issue of fairness. We know that it was a difficult road for everyone at times, but we are all very proud now to live in a town that extends protections equally to all Frankfortians regardless of race, religion, age, or sexuality and gender equality and sexual orientation. And so to celebrate being the fifth city in the state to pass a fairness ordinance and to celebrate being a civil rights leader of the South, we're holding a party tomorrow night at the Ward Oates Amphitheater from 6:00 to 9:00. We're going to have two live bands, the KBE Quartet, and the Quantum Mechanics, and kid games, and free food. And we would just like to sincerely invite you and anyone else to come join us. Thank you again.
Great. Thank you. See you tomorrow.
This is my partner, Martin Farland. We own H&amp;A Resource Management in Bursells, Kentucky. We've been the company that's been recycling the bio solids from the wastewater treatment plant for the past five years, actually since 2008. The contract recently was up, it was going to expire, and the city put it out for bid. We bid the project against the local landfill. We were the low bidder by about $27,000. Now, in your agenda, I think you've got there, I think it's on page six on item seven, it's being recommended that you guys award this to the landfill. And the reason for that, or what's explained in the document, is that there's been a recent valuation of the wastewater treatment plant that's showing that there's approximately $64,000 savings if they do not landify it because of the savings in energy because the material will not be treated in order to meet the land application standards. So I guess the first thing I wanted to point out is that if you factor in the $27,000 savings with the $64,000 reduction in energy, the difference is really only about $36,000 between the two bids. And one thing, I guess, we didn't want to take up a whole lot of your time here to just give you guys a few thoughts, and we passed out a little sheet there with some items on it for you guys to look over. But wastewater treatment plants, they have, the digestion process, or where they're going to save the energy, is a process that wastewater treatment plants have that essentially break the material down. It will help to reduce the volume and the odor of the material. If the city does not use those digesters, there's going to be some increase in that volume. We, I don't know what that is. But I guess what we're trying to point out is, before you guys make a decision, is to kind of know what that volume would be, because if the volume does go up, then these prices may come closer together because of the increase in volume by not digesting, by not digesting the material. The other thing is going to be obviously the recycling end of things. I mean, we're all getting pushed to recycle more and more often. Land applying, this material is recycling. It's promoted by EPA, it's promoted by the Water Environment Federation, it's promoted by the state as a method to recycle. You're looking at about 8,300 cubic yards of material that the city's estimated that's going to be recycled. You know, I don't know what you guys, what the city recycling program, cans and bottles, I don't know what volume that they generate or recycle every year, but I'm going to suspect it's substantially less than 8,300 that could be recycled at the wastewater plant. The other thing, obviously, one of the benefits to recycling is diverting a product that's reusable. This material is, and it's immediately reusable on all the local farms here in Franklin County, which is where we have been applying it for the past five years. So, you know, it's recycling, and it's a large volume to recycle. So I guess what I want you guys to think about is, I don't know if the local recycling program here is subsidized, I don't know if it supports itself or not, but you're looking at 8,300 cubic yards of material that can be recycled, safely approved by EPA. That's, again, if we're trying to save some landfill space and to recycle a beneficial product, that's what this is doing here. So, again, all we're wanting to do is point out that there are some things to consider, and not simply that maybe we're going to save some electricity, which is great, and there's not a thing wrong with that. I mean, we're in business ourselves, and we want to save money, but there are some other factors to consider in this, and we'd like them to consider what this increase in volume may be if the digesters are not used. A lot of cities do have them. It's not just to be able to landify. There's lots of cities out there that run digesters. City of Lexington, for instance, does not landify the material, but all of it does go through digesters. Obviously, they have determined that it is worthwhile in some format, whether it reduces the volume or what, to spend that extra money, electricity, to do that. So, just some things to consider. We gave you, given you a sheet there. Hope you get a chance to look over it. I know we're kind of pressed for time here tonight, but any questions you guys may have, we'd love to answer them, or after the meeting, or whatever, we'd be more than happy to answer anything you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Jeff Perry. I live out at Duckers, and I also work for the local landfill. First, I'd like to say that H&amp;A is a fine company. They have good executives, good employees, and they run a good program. But I think one factor not mentioned in the presentation, and I think aside from the savings identified in the cost analysis, if you look back the last few years, in 2010 and 2011, you all shipped 1,200 tons to the landfill while doing the land farm program. In 2012, you shipped 2,564 tons to the landfill. And this year, so far through July, you've shipped just short of 1,000 tons, 972. All of those tons that did not go to the land farm were at a much higher rate than what our company has bid on this bid before you tonight. I think if you take the cost savings and know if you go landfarming, you're still going to have to ship a large portion at a very high rate to the landfill. So the savings are really greatly enhanced when you add that one factor into it. And I just wanted to point that out to go with the savings in the cost analysis, that in cold weather, inclement weather, you cannot land farm at all generally, and you're going to have to landfill it at a much higher rate. So I would lock in to all the volume at the lower right in the bid. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer.
Yes, Mayor, approach him. Is it okay if we move this agenda item to new business to discuss?
Yes.
Is the rest of the commission okay with that? I make a motion to move it, 7.4, correct?
Yeah.
7.4 toward new business?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hadden?
Yes.
Mayor, approach Tim Rhodes?
Yes.
And for you all, what that means is, we have a consent calendar for our voting meeting. We're just going to continue with that. You guys are going to be pushed back to the end of the meeting under new business to be discussed. Okay?
Any other citizen comments? Okay, see none, we'll move on to ordinances. The city attorney will read those.
Ordinance 4.1, and this is a second reading, an ordinance fixing the rate of taxation for the year 2013 on all tangible property subject to tax, trust, and insurance companies, public service companies, and levying said tax for all city purposes. Summary, that the 2013 City of Frankfurt adblock tax rate is 20 and 9 tenths cents on each $100 valuation of all real and personal property, 20 and 9 tenths cents on each $100 valuation on public utilities and public service companies taxable on a franchise basis, 15 and no tenths cents on each $100 valuation on taxable capital of insurance companies.
I move adoption.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mayor, approach Tim Rhodes?
Yes.
Ordinance 4.2, by title, an ordinance fixing the rate of taxation for the year 2014 on all motor vehicles and levying said tax for all city purposes. Summary, this ordinance fixes the rate of taxation for the year 2014 at the sum of 22 and 7 tenths cents on each $100 valuation on all motor vehicles subject to taxation in the city. That's also a second reading.
I move adoption.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mayor, approach Tim Rhodes?
Yes.
Ordinance 4.3, and this is also a second reading, by title, an ordinance amending section 39.04 and section 39.12 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances to amend the city's Ethics Code. Summary, this ordinance amends section 39.04 and section 39.12 of the City of Frankfurt's Code of Ethics so that individuals appointed to city agencies that are not paid are not required to file statements of financial interest. However, these individuals will still be required to comply with the Code of Ethics.
I move adoption.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mayor, approach Tim Rhodes?
Yes.
Ordinance 4.4, and this is a first reading, by title, an ordinance amending section 150.05 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, Property Maintenance Code. Summary, this ordinance amends section 150.05 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances to provide that interest that has accrued and is due on outstanding and unpaid fines imposed or issued due to violation of the city's property maintenance code is fully waived in the event that said fines are paid in full on or before November 30, 2013. Furthermore, where outstanding fines resulting from violations of the city's property maintenance code are not paid in full on or before November 30, 2013, the interest on said fines shall continue to accrue.
Move for adoption?
It's first.
I'll take it back.
He's recommending that when you create the next one.
Discussion?
All right. Y'all, any of y'all have any discussion?
No.
I had a couple of questions. The city attorney, I guess the first one was, this would not take effect until the formal meeting in October if it was passed then, correct?
Correct.
So, we had talked, I think, in the work session about maybe having something for 60 days, and it looked to me like this would run a little shy, so I was wondering if we wanted to run it through the, through the end of December to give it more time.
We could do that, or if you wanted, it's my understanding there's going to be a special meeting shortly if we want to approve, have a second reading at the special meeting, that would accomplish.
I was hoping you'd say that. I think that's, I think that's something we, we'll see what everybody else thinks. And my other question on this was, the, how are we going to publicize it? Are we going to send all the people that owe money another letter so that they know it, so they'll actually do it? How's it going to be publicized?
Well, I know that we will send the people who have outstanding property maintenance code liens, letters to tell them of this opportunity, and certainly working with Mr. Mueller, we'll make sure that it's on the city's website, and we'll discuss other ways to publicize it as well.
What's the commission think about the... Move to action?
So we would add it to the special meeting?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to resolutions. I think we don't have to have that read, so... Is there a motion on the resolution?
And this is just a resolution to authorize the filing of an application for 2013 transportation alternative grant funds, and to designate the mayor to execute all documents pertaining to the grant.
Absolutely yes to adopt.
Do we have a second?
It was Commissioner Hadden.
Any discussion?
I hope it's successful.
I do too. That's two we've been wanting to do.
Yep. Commissioner Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hadden?
Yes.
Mayor, approach Tim Rhodes?
Yes. Now we'll move to the consent calendar. Did anybody fill out a form to pull one off? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. City Attorney.
I'm going to not read 7.4, since that's been pulled off of the consent calendar. But 7.1 is to authorize the mayor to sign a joint funding agreement with the U.S. Geological Survey to operate the gauging station upstream of Lock 4 on the Kentucky River. 7.2 is to authorize generation of a purchase order to Olic Inspired Innovation for D-Phomer to treat ethylene at the wastewater treatment plant, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents associated with the purchase. 7.3 is to authorize generation of a purchase order to General Chemical for aluminum sulfate for phosphorus removal at the wastewater treatment plant, and to authorize the mayor to sign all documents associated with that purchase. 7.5 is to authorize generation of a purchase order to Olic Inspired Innovation for dry polymer to treat bio solids at the wastewater treatment plant, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents associated with the purchase. 7.5 is to consider approving a sewer extension contract with the Commonwealth of Kentucky for a proposed extension to the Army Aviation Support Facility at Boone National Garden, and to authorize the mayor to sign all documents relating to the contract. And 7.7 is to consider approving a sewer extension contract with M&amp;W LLC for a proposed commercial development at Parkside, and to authorize the mayor to sign all documents related to the contract, and this is for sanitary sewer extension at the Parkside Development. 7.8 is the authorization of approval of change order number one and change order two to award additional funds and contract time to the construction contract with Mack Construction for construction of approximately 1,900 feet of gravity sewer up to 24 inches in diameter located between the Parkside Development and U.S. 421, and to authorize the mayor to sign all documents related to the project. 7.9 is to authorize approval of amendment number three to the professional services agreement with URS Corporation for Engineering Services to replace an under-capacity sewer line along Slickway Branch near U.S. 60 and I-64, and to authorize the mayor to sign all documents related to that project. And 7.10 is to approve amendment number one to a professional services agreement with Hazen and Sawyer PSC for design and bidding services associated with the repair and/or replacement of an interceptor sanitary sewer line from Elkhorn Drive to Choctaw Trail, and to authorize the mayor to sign documents related to the project. Number 7.11 is not sewer-related, I thought I'd point that out.
Thank you.
But anyway, it's to authorize the purchase of a 2014 Mack truck outfitted with a Wayne automated side loader body, and to authorize the mayor to sign any related documents. Number 7.12 is to authorize the signing of a contract with Sports JM 316 Group LLC, doing business as Sports Image, to provide the city with scoreboards for the baseball and softball fields at no charge, and to authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. 7.13 is to authorize approval of amendment number one and amendment number two to the contract between the City of Frankfurt and HDR Engineering, Inc. for additional services for the Crestwood Storm Sewer Project, and that is at Public Works and Sewer Department Project. And then 7.14 to authorize a contract award for professional services for the Transit Wash Bay Contract in the amount of $15,000, and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. And we do have some personnel action. There's a transfer and voluntary demotion of Brad Gold from Fire Battalion Chief to Fire Captain, and then Stephanie Calla is resigning from the Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Go to board appointments. I think, oh, I'm sorry. Need a motion. Move for approval. Do you want to say it?
Second. Mr. Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mayor, approach Tim Rhodes?
Yes.
Anyone else have any? Okay. As for old business, our last work session, we talked about setting up a joint meeting with the county and other entities, and Swimplate Frankfurt, or any other group, in regard to setting up recreation facilities here within our community. I just want to set forth that per an email from fiscal court states that Monday, September 30th, 2:00 p.m., at Investors Heritage would be the time, and just make sure we as a commission are agreeable to that. Great. And...
September 30th?
September 30th.
This Monday.
Have we heard from the mayor on that?
I can speak that I was with the mayor and Tim last Friday, and we sent out an email. Tim, mayor was kind of trying to pick a day, and Tim just said, what if I just send an email asking for the 30th? And I think that's how that date just kind of came out. And I think October 14th was the next one that they were going to talk about, but I believe the 30th was confirmed via an email from fiscal court.
Okay.
At 2:00.
So do we need a motion to set that?
Not necessarily. Just making sure we're all in agreeance.
I don't think, we don't have to have a motion. If you want to make a motion, though, do it that way.
If the mayor's in agreement because he was there, I think we're all okay with it.
We just need it all on our calendar, so we're there.
Okay. The next old business that I have is, speaking of Elkhorn Drive, which was brought up, I just wanted to see if we can find out, is that street reopened yet? Do we know when it, do you know? Is that you, Tom?
No.
With Elkhorn Drive?
It's not open, I can tell you that.
Frankly, I don't know.
It's not open, I can tell you that.
Right.
I've been gone for a while, so I do not know. But I can find out for the right of tomorrow. Would you say it is not? But I can, I can find stats to let y'all know.
Thank you. That's all I have for old business.
Any other commissioners have old business?
I've got a couple. We got a, one thing, I'd like to see what the commission thinks about, we got a letter about the properties that are, received triple tax notification. I would, I would like to see us move toward foreclosure on those properties where the property hadn't paid taxes for three years.
Do you want to bring this up just in a work session for a discussion, or do you want to discuss it now?
I'd like to go ahead, since they haven't paid for three years, I'd like to maybe get it till we get to four years. So if we could go ahead and discuss it now, it'd be great.
What does the city benefit from going ahead and doing that? Do you know, Mr. Slister? If, do we receive any compensation if we push this forward?
You would, the compensation that you would receive would be, you'd get the delinquent taxes paid when the property is sold at the courthouse steps, if it goes all the way through the foreclosure process. On the other hand, if you file suit against an individual or entity that has not paid its taxes, then sometimes that encourages them to come forward and go ahead and pay at this time. Those are the benefits, is that you do get the tax paid. I would recommend that you not file foreclosure action against any amounts that are less than $500 at this time, just because there are some costs incurred when you go through that process. You've got to pay filing fees.
We got a letter about the properties that are, received triple tax notification. I would, I would like to see us move toward foreclosure on those properties where the property hadn't paid taxes for three years.
Do you want to bring this up just in a work session for a discussion, or do you want to discuss it now?
I'd like to go ahead, since they haven't paid for three years, I'd like to maybe get it till we get to four years. So if we could go ahead and discuss it now, it'd be great.
What does the city benefit from going ahead and doing that? Do you know, Mr. Slister? If, do we receive any compensation if we push this forward?
You would, the compensation that you would receive would be, you get the delinquent taxes paid when the property will be sold at the courthouse steps, if it goes all the way through the foreclosure process. On the other hand, if you file suit against an individual or entity that has not paid its taxes, then sometimes that encourages them to come forward and go ahead and pay at this time. Those are the benefits, is that you do get the tax paid. I would recommend that you not file foreclosure action against any amounts that are less than five hundred dollars at this time, just because there are some costs incurred when you go through that process.
Mm-hmm.
You've got to pay filing fees, and you've got to pay the commissioner's fees for selling the property, et cetera. And so in order to make sure you're spending the city's money wisely, I would recommend at least this initial stage that you don't foreclose on anyone that owes less than five hundred dollars. And once you've gone through the process, for those that owe more than that, then you can make a decision based on experience on whether or not you want to foreclose on properties where the folks have not paid property tax for three years, but they don't owe as much.
Commissioner Haines, I think there's one other positive, and that is, is that you get an owner who is not paying their taxes and probably not investing in their property and, and take them out of ownership and possibly get a new owner in who would invest capital and have, and raise the level of the things around them rather than having it at a place where it's lower because of not paying their taxes.
I think it makes sense to move forward with it. I'm not getting anything out of those properties right now, are we? I mean, they're just, we're not getting anything, and neighbors living next to them, are any of them complaining? Living next to abandoned properties, are we getting many complaints, or? Yeah? So, you get, you know, you kind of get stuck that you want people to take care of their properties, and I ideally believe that most people do want to take care of their properties. Sometimes we get a little over our budgets, I think, and, and we can't always take care of what we need to take care of, but we keep things. So you have this fine little line that, that do we cross saying, you can't pay your taxes, so let's try to foreclose, or, you know, every situation's different.
Well, and I think that, I think that's why we've set such a low bar by saying that, you know, if you don't pay them for three years, and many of these people have had, you know...
Many years.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh-huh.
Many years, yes, ma'am. So, and I, and I would echo what the city attorney said, which is, we can use this as a learning experience as well to see what to do with the ones that are less than five hundred dollars. But what does everybody else think?
Well, I'm okay with moving forward with the ones that are five hundred dollars or above, because I myself have gotten many complaints about owners of houses that are not taking care of them, and I'm only one person. So I'm sure that the people that actually, you know, take these complaints daily, I've seen some of the list has more than about five that I've gotten.
So let's set a higher bar and take it as a learning curve?
Okay. Start at five hundred dollars and up.
Proceed.
You like that, Gary?
He's on it. He's on it. Another...
So we need a vote?
You have to vote on it.
I think it'd probably be better if you did it by motion.
Okay.
You'll make the motion?
Well, since I was sitting here, if one of y'all could make it, that'd be good.
Do you want to give me a better wording versus to make a motion to...
I've got moved to foreclose on those properties. We received a triple tax notification that have not paid property taxes for three years or more, and that the outstanding balance is five hundred dollars or greater.
I'll just say so moved.
So moved.
Second, Commissioner.
Okay. Who moved it?
Commissioner Bowers moved it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Haines seconded.
I'll third it.
There you go.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Haines.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers.
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden.
Yes.
Mayor Per Tim Roach.
Yes. The next one is, under old business, is somewhat related. I would like to ask Gary to get us an updated cost estimate on demolishing the old Y. We have, and he probably needs to come up and sort of talk to us about that, because it's not quite as simple as just saying that.
For the old Y, we have attempted to do that four months ago. The property owner would not allow the contractors into the premise of the property, so they were not able to give us quotes. But if you all ask us to do it, we can do that again, but I'm not sure with the current pending district court actions, what the owner will or will not allow as far as contractors to come onto the property.
Gary, can you get us a, you have some cost estimates from previous years, correct?
We do, yes.
Is there a way you could have those existing contractors sort of update that without looking at it in a way that's somewhat general, so we have a general idea? Or is that possible?
I asked him to do that as well.
Oh, he did.
And they said we would work on it, but I never got anything back from him.
Well, we might not have ever gotten anything back, because this has been such a long process. So how about trying again and telling them that it's, maybe a good chance it actually happens?
One of the questions, I don't know if you can answer it for me, but they have asked, I guess, part of the discussion, that their concerns is there's going to be asbestos, there's going to be some other environmental concerns with the structure, as old as it is. And in fact, part of the foundation fudders are under the sidewalk of the Bridge Street. So I have advised them to assume not to touch anything under the sidewalk, leave the fudders foundations as much as possible, but the rest of the structure needs to come down. And we don't want any soil erosion problems by removing of the foundation for the river, so, and it's right next to the flood wall. So in that aspect, I was good with them leaving basically like a knee wall around the property and anything they needed along the right of way. I told them, assume that. If that is more than an assumption from me, but it's some assurances from you, I think that may help as well. But I told them as far as the asbestos or any environmental issues, just put a disclaimer that that would be an additional cost, should it be, we can get a bid subject to. And they, that was the bid we got, '04, '05, it had a lot of disclaimers.
What do y'all think about the, what you're saying?
Is there any way we can get the information from the district court to see what, what the process is, where, I mean, have they met with court yet?
I don't believe that they have. I've got a call into the county attorney to discuss that and haven't been able to catch up with them.
Okay.
I do think that when they do have the hearing, we can make sure that either Gary or I are present and ask the court to authorize us to have, authorize the city to have its contractors go in and take a look at the property and request court authorization for that process. If they need to get inside.
And to follow up, about three weeks, four weeks ago, the county attorney's office had me come over and re-sign some forms on that specific case so they, so they could serve, but I have not been notified as the actual hearing date. In our update last week, you all got, 306 Flagert was one, if I may, since we're on that. It's tomorrow. We just got notice today that it's actually going to district court tomorrow.
Okay.
I believe it was 306, but it's, Flagert went over. Don't know your way.
Let me say on this old Y commissioners, that this going to, district court is really going to be the same res, probably will be the exact same resolution as we had prior to going to district court, which is, is that the, more than likely, if we're going to want, get it, if we want it torn down, more than likely, we're going to have to pay for it. Because the entity that owns the old Y more than likely doesn't have any assets in it. So if they lose, or if, or there've been orders to do certain things, if there's no assets there, then you're going to have to pay for it to be torn down. Mr. City Attorney, is that accurate?
I'd say that's probably about a ninety-nine percent chance.
So I'm just kind of letting everybody know that where the, where the end of the day is, is it very well may be that, that we're, we're paying to tear it down, the taxpayer.
And again, Ms. Hall, is, there might be grant money that might be able to help us tear, tear down such a facility that's so close to open water? I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, I'm glad you did. That's a good topic.
We did look into that, and there used to be some FEMA money for reoccurring losses, and that's rolled over into other FEMA mitigation money. And there are a lot of requirements and regulations that are stipulated by that. One of them is, we have to own it to tear it down, and if we buy it, it has to be voluntary sale by the owner, and they don't want any controversy involved in it.
Thank you.
So, so that's where we are. That's the only funding we've found, and again, there's so many regulations, I don't know that it would qualify.
Thanks, Rebecca.
You got any more good news, Gary?
The only other thing is that at our last work session, you asked us to give you a list of other properties that we were seeking for demolition. Apologize for lateness, but I did provide that to you. The top eight are our top priorities. They've gone through the code enforcement board, orders are ready, and the owners have failed to follow up on that. Red means when you open the next page, you'll see a map, and some are red and some are yellow. Red's top priority, yellow are secondary. Little more work's needed to do those, that's where we're at. We requested fifty thousand dollars the last three, four, or five years in the budget. We typically get between twenty-five thousand and thirty thousand approved, and the current budget, fiscal year we're in now, thirty thousand was awarded. And the first one is going to be, come up for you next month. I wasn't able to get two bids yet for the one on Home Street, which is the very top one, but the one we have is right at ten thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken. We get about, and the two on Main Street, which are the next two on the list, we're getting bids on those now, and it will likely exceed our budget for the two of those.
Well, let, let's just say magically that you've found more money and got more money. What, how, how hard is it to accelerate the process?
Getting bids for the ones in red is getting bids. The yellow ones, we would need to, I would need to do a little more background on them. I don't think we've gone to the code enforcement board ordering the owner to demolish, and without that, you're, you're always subject to lawsuit, but you're, it increases. I would feel much better sending it to the code enforcement board twice, which will take about five months for two consecutive processes.
Four.
Maybe four.
There's one that's deceased on here.
Oh, yeah. Several are on foreclosure, so we have to go away PVA records.
Well, I would, I would ask if commissions favorably disposed toward it, that we accelerate the getting of bids on the red ones and accelerate the process on the yellow ones, so that if we get some additional money, and I, that's another one of mine to bring up here in a minute, that if we get some additional money, that we can get these things torn down, because if we're only doing a couple of years, well, and you've got this kind of a backlog, it strikes me that that's going to take quite a while, and that this might be a way to advance economic development if you're able to tear down things that are in really bad shape, so that maybe the neighborhoods can be improved through the building no longer being there.
I was just going to ask if I may, that I know, I know I've asked, and I know that we can't kind of do fire training or SWAT training with some of these properties to help make the demo a little less a demo. But is there any way to get, like, the VOTEC school anything involved, like, some of the younger kids and working with the school system, seeing if we can train some kids so we're a work-ready community, and maybe some of the kids need to learn some of this expertise, so when they get out of school, they can go to work? Just a random question, but none of us probably have the answer for that.
When we do the, seek the bids, if we could make that a requirement, that they attempt to do such with their own crew, because the city doesn't actually do the work, if the city did just our own demolition, we could do that for sure, or at least take the statute.
Right, since we bid it out.
But if we're bidding it, I think we would have to make that a, I would need to know to stipulate that, otherwise...
Or if it was a city property, too, I guess.
Then we were the owners.
If we were the owners.
Be a lot different.
Right.
And after demolition, we still don't own the property. We strictly remove the structure.
So is, is everybody fine with accelerating that as far as not necessarily voting for it, but just having him accelerate the process?
What'd you say?
Are you, are we fine with accelerating without a vote?
No, I thought Commissioner Haines said something.
No, I said I was fine with it, especially the ones in red.
All right.
On that, another old business item on local preference, that policy that we're going to go with, what have we, what have we done to date to get that, get the word out on that? I don't know who's to answer that.
I'll follow up on that. Commissioner, I don't know where it is, but I know we made a request to put it on the website, and I don't know if that's on there yet or not, but I'll check and see if it's out there.
Let me, if, if everybody's all right with these things, let's, perhaps we could do these things. Could we send a letter to all vendors, all vendors that the city uses? You may have already done that.
We're going to do that. The plan is when we send out our corporate reports, that's what's going to, and I know we're going to have it added in the newspaper as well, so...
Oh, that's great.
I'll send you a copy of that add, I think, Rob, just to kind of review how it would have been on Friday, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, but...
Yeah, if we could do that, that, I guess that would be good, too, because we'd save it on postage. The other aspect of that is, has anybody here contacted the chamber to have them really promote that with their members?
I'm not sure. I'll bet out, but I'll, I'll check that as possible.
I don't know if any other commissioners have any thoughts on this one or not, on how to market it.
The local preference?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
No, but I'm more than happy to think about it and try to come up with some ideas.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
And we can...
Try to have a bigger list than we did have.
And I guess during our October meeting, let me kind of go over goals and priorities again, I guess, bring that up.
See how that's going. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Another new business item is, I don't know if, and this may be you, Steve, I don't know if you know, have we gotten our seceda money back? You know, there was, we were going to get a share of that money?
Don't think that money's come yet. I haven't seen it, I haven't seen it come for it.
Do we know about when we...
I'll go, I'll go check.
Okay. Do we kind of know when we're going to get it? Does anybody know?
I'll go, I'll go check.
Okay.
The local preference is not on the website yet, by the way.
That's all old business I have. Does anybody else have any? New business. Why don't we go ahead and do the seven point four item? Oh, that's right.
If you have people sitting here for seven point four...
That's what I was meaning. Let's go ahead and do that. We've had people, they've been waiting, so let's go ahead and discuss 7.4. And 7.4 is authorizing the mayor to sign the contract with Republic Services for the disposal of dewatered bio solids from the wastewater treatment plant and authorize the mayor to sign all documents associated with the contract. And do you want Bill Scaf to present from the Sewer Department?
That's what I was hoping. And before I get started on that, concrete is scheduled to be placed on Elkhorn Drive tomorrow, and the road should be open very shortly thereafter.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The wonders of modern technology.
That's right. Find things out.
Bio solids. First, let me state that both Mr. Stevens with HNA Resources and Mr. Perry with Republic Services both hit the nail on the head. And you ask, how could they do that? Because they both have very valid points. But there are a few things, I think, that the Commission needs to know about where we are today with our bio solids. Our bio solids today have gone up approximately 50% what they were a couple of years ago. In fact, Mr. Bradley and Mr. Gray and I had a conversation about this about two weeks ago. It went up about the same time that Pay As You Throw came into place. Coincidence? I do not know. Are people putting more stuff down their garbage disposal than they used to? Maybe they are. But it's more that we have to dispose of. What has happened is, over the past year, year and a half, as Republic stated, we have had additional problems with having to send more of our bio solids to the landfill, either because of weather-related issues or because of the inability for us to treat the volume of bio solids with our digesters. So we've got several different issues we've gotta look at. If we go with land farming, probably during the summer, that works fine. During the winter, we have problems meeting the requirements for a Class B bio solids. Another point I do wanna point, or another issue I wanna point out is that there is a, an error in the abstract. In the abstract, it says... That the energy savings is $64,200. Unfortunately, as I pointed out earlier, I was not around when these were done. That savings of $64,000 is assuming some investment at the plant. That investment at the plant is about a $300,000 investment. Without that $300,000 investment, our savings is more on the order of $46,000 rather than $64,000. However, I do also wanna point out, as Mr. Perry with Republic pointed out, there is also an additional charge of $8.85 per wet ton that HNA has in their contract for any dollars that we send to the landfill. So, you know, and at this point, we do not know what that is. However, if you look at the, at their base, at HNA Resources' base bid, which is $160,190, and you add in the additional energy cost of $46,000, that automatically puts you at 206. If you assume that 25% of our bio solids goes to the landfill at $8.85 per wet ton, that adds another $15,487, which ends up being about $222,000 under the HNA Resources' contract versus the $187,460 to the Republic's contract. Now, do I, can I sit here and say that we're gonna send 25% to the landfill? I don't know. It could be 10%. It could be 50%. It depends on weather. Wet weather causes us problems. Cold weather, we cannot digest as efficiently in cold weather. The bugs just aren't happy in cold weather. They like, they like summer weather. So those are a lot of unknowns. Now, I wish there were a more definitive, I'm an engineer. I like black and white, yes, no answers. There is no black, white, yes, no answer here. If I could sit here and stand here and say that we are absolutely 100% certain that we could digest and meet the Class B requirements, I'd say HNA Resources is the right way to go, even with the energy savings or energy cost. But when you add in the additional cost for, and again, this does not, this is assuming that we're still paying the same cubic yard cost, which would go up, as Republic said. We would be, I'm assuming, and I don't wanna put words in their mouth, but I would assume that we would be paying a standard tipping fee across the, across the scale, which is, you know, considerably, again, I don't know what it is, and I don't know what they wanna say at this point. But, you know, their base bid is at $22.39 per ton with a fuel charge, based upon today's market, that's $26.78. Again, if the cost of fuel goes down, their cost goes down. If the cost of fuel goes up, their cost is gonna go up slightly. Again, there's no clear, definitive, yes, no, black, white answer. I'd be happy to answer any questions you've got.
I have some, if I may. May I? I'll just go first?
Yes, ma'am.
If anyone else has any, please feel free to jump in. And I guess you kind of roundabout answered my questions, but at this point in time, anything that's left goes to the landfill now.
If we cannot land farm it, it goes to the landfill. That's correct.
Is it not sellable to other land farms? Could we not sell it?
No. Because the reason we're sending it to the landfill is it doesn't... Bio solids are classified as Class A and Class B. Class A, you can sell or give away to anybody that wants it.
Okay.
You can sell it as a supplement. Class B, you have to be permitted to take it. What's happening is, when it goes to the landfill, it's because we cannot meet the Class B requirement. It's got too many pathogens in it. So it cannot go anywhere but a permitted land farm. It has to be a Class B to go to a permitted land farm. And if we could get it to a Class B, HNA Resources would be sending it to the land farm. We just can't digest it and get it to a Class B. We could build a new digester.
And that would?
That would cost you about a three-quarters to a million dollars.
I like putting things on the consent calendar.
Trust me, we have discussed that. But that's the problem, is with the increased volume that we've gotten, I say over the past year and a half, we just don't have the capacity to be able to digest it for the length of time. And back to the question, or the issue of digesting, we would not, not digest. We still have certain things we have to digest. All of the septic haulers and all the grease we get from septic haulers goes through our digester. And we would partially digest everything. We just wouldn't digest it to the point where it meets the requirements to meet the EPA standards for Class B bio solids. Which is why our energy costs, actually, our energy costs, if we eliminated bio, or treating, digesting completely, we'd save about $93,000. But we're not eliminating it completely. We're just, we're just reducing the amount of digesting we'd be doing.
And then once it goes to the landfill, it just sits at the landfill, what happens?
Well, actually, and the folks at the landfill probably can answer this better than I can. My understanding is, it's not, it's not necessarily a bad product for the landfill. The undigested or partially digested bio solids is a methane generator. If they are trying to capture, and I've heard stories that they are capturing or gonna capture methane for reuse, the breakdown of the product does create methane. The other thing is, again, as I understand it, the bio solids will not generate more airspace, but it generates airspace faster because of the bacteria in the bio solids when it's mixed with the garbage, causes it to break down quicker. You don't get more airspace, but you get the airspace you're getting quicker. And I don't know if, that's what I've heard, and I don't know if that's a true statement or not, but that's what I've been told by other, never by Republic, but I've been told that by other people that do landfill work.
I would like to hear, I mean, I guess in general is, there's always concern that landfills are gonna fill up. And if we're taking more tonnage to the landfill, it's gonna fill up quicker. I mean, ideally, the more you take, ideally, it's gonna fill up quicker. Common sense would say that.
Yes.
What does this process do for you? How, does it benefit the landfill?
Well, I mean, he's correct in that sludge helps decompose the landfill. The only thing that we're settling out there is airspace. The more that we can compact what we receive, the more, the better we are at managing that airspace. That's just, if you go to a landfill and they're not compacting the waste over and over and over, if you look at our records with this Kentucky Division of Waste Management, we far exceed the state standard on compaction. Because the more we compact, the less airspace that we have to use. Sludge is one of the valuable components. Because of moisture and decomposition, it helps us compact better, and we use less airspace. So that's why it's of value to us. Another thing I would mention that he also went into, we have seven disposal facilities in the state of Kentucky. Probably right now, four of those would already be on waste-to-energy. I mean, we have contracts, we have the specifications. Benson Valley, at one point in the future, it will be a waste-to-energy plant. Now, whether we, you know, in Grant County, we've got a deal to give the energy to the school system. And another, in Tremble County, we have a contract to sell that waste, or sell that electricity to Dow Cornet in various places. What we'll do in Frankford, I don't know. But the only reason we're not having waste-to-energy plants right now at this moment is fracking has lowered the natural gas price to a point. It's not economically feasible. But that still doesn't mean that one day, when that place closes, or even before, in another 20 years, we will go in and recapture the energy that is decomposing in that methane that is being produced.
Can we not work together with both of these? I mean, what do you do with your product when it goes to you, when you, to you guys? What do you guys do with the product once?
We land it by on local farms for earthworm, hay fields, pasture fields, corn, soybeans, things like that here in Franklin County. And we have no problem with working, I mean, we're, I guess, we're not necessarily all or nothing here. You know, and, I mean, Bill is right, sometimes, you know, when they cannot meet the standards to land apply, we are not allowed by regulations to land apply if it cannot meet those standards. So we have to take some small amount of material. Again, we're trying to take the smallest amount as possible, no offense to Jeff. I've known Jeff for years. We don't have any animosity here or anything like that, but it's just, you know, sometimes you have to do that. But we prefer to land apply, of course. We think it's more of a form of recycling than putting it in a landfill.
What he says is true, but for maybe a couple of you guys, I think, I know one of you were on this council, you know, 10 years ago, when we had this very similar debate. And of course, Republic wasn't involved at that time, it was PFI, but we got the methane deal in, that they were gonna put methane collection in, and they were gonna sell it, and they were gonna do all this stuff. Well, here we sit 10 years later, that happened. I'm not saying it's going to, I'm not saying it's not going to, because again, it's operated by a different company now. But 10 years ago, that was supposed to happen, and it didn't happen.
Phil, ask you a couple of quick questions. Are you through Commissioner Head?
No.
Okay, you keep going.
I mean, you just ask some more, and then I'm happy to, maybe you're gonna ask the same questions, please.
Well, the, you're right, obviously, your recommendation is what's on here.
Yes.
Okay. And to the best of your thinking, even though it's not exact, because you said it's not black or white, to the best of your thinking, your recommendation should be the least costly.
That's affirmative.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Just a suggestion.
Can you come to the microphone, please? I'm sorry, she records all this, and if you, I should have asked you as well, sorry. Just so it's recorded.
I'm Mark McFarland with HNA. This isn't a suggestion that's gonna answer your question as to what to do today. It's a suggestion of possibly how to deal with it future or go back and start over and bid it again. Is rather than putting forth this job as a, it's landfilling versus land farming, maybe put the bid out as two separate documents, where landfill's guaranteed, say, a volume of 1,000 tons or whatever, and they're bidding against only other landfills. Land farming is a separate bid. You're guaranteed zero, whatever it is. If we're cheaper than the landfill, then the city can choose to send whatever volume they can to us and send what they can't send to us to the landfill. Or if the landfill's cheaper, they can send all of it. Or if y'all wanna recycle half of it, spend a little bit extra and send a half to us and half to them. I guess my, that's my point or suggestion is that maybe look at re-bidment, where instead of us competing against each other, you know, the, given the landfill, you know, right now, they charge a considerable amount more when we have to take the material to them because they're not under contract. But if you set the contract such that for them to get material, they got to give you their best price, you know. It may not be as cheap as it is right now, because they're not guaranteed 7,000 tons. They're guaranteed 1,000, 2,000, whatever y'all choose. But it may give the best of both worlds. And I know this, you know, down at the wastewater plant, they have trouble at times, you know, getting the stuff to meet the, meet the requirements, you know. A lot of times, it's in the winter, which it's good for us because of the weather's bad. You know, we're struggling to be able to spread it. So, you know, it's kind of a relief to us at times to take it to the landfill. I think if, you know, if you look at maybe restructuring the bid, you know, it's gonna put the decision back on the city's side to be able to do what's best for them. Instead of having to pick us or them, you know, it's all in one way or the other, the way it's structured right now. That was just a suggestion that I had. That's about it.
I'm feeling on that.
Can you just stand for any questions? Mr. Viles?
I guess it's, I guess it's a legal question, Mr. Moore. If we were to do that, put a new bid out for, to structure it differently, and we didn't like what came back, could we then stick with the original two bids? I mean, could we then stick with the original options?
No, what you would do is, you would send out a new bid proposal requesting people to respond. And if you didn't like the response, then at that point, you'd have to put out yet another bid package.
I was gonna say, we would have to actually reject this bid.
Right.
Reject this bid to go out for a new bid.
Mr. Scaf, can you tell us your thoughts on that recommendation? Mr. Saff, can you tell us your thoughts on that recommendation? Do you want to?
Inherently, it's, I don't see it as a bad idea. And, and as he was speaking, actually before, before he started speaking, it was something I was mulling in my mind. What I'm struggling with is how you would structure that bid to make sure you still got the best price from all entities and something frankly, that was manageable. You know, the, the problem we have now is if, especially, again, primarily, it's, it's a colder weather when the, when the bugs aren't as happy because they're not warm. We struggle because the solids start building up in the plant and we can't waste because we can't beat the, the limits of the Class B. So what happens is, that causes some operational issues as the solids start building up. When the solids start building up, our E. coli numbers start going up also, which this past winter, we had several excursions where we got NOVs from the state because we exceeded our E. coli limits because the solids were high enough that they created problems with us meeting our, our permit limits. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a balancing act of, of trying to do what, what needs to be done to manage the plant. You know, ideally, what we would love to do is keep our solids level consistent. The way we're doing it now, our solids do this. They start building up and when it gets to a certain point, we have to waste. Sometimes we have to waste without it being, meeting our permit or meeting the Class B's bio solids, and it has to go to the landfill. Sometimes it doesn't happen that way. Ideally, we would like to keep our solids at a, at a nice even keel, which would make the operation of the plant a lot simpler. Could we rebid it? Yes, we probably can. Our contract's up in September. I'm sure that HNA would be happy to extend our contract for a month.
Sure.
If, if we chose to do that. But like I say, we would have to come up with some way of, of putting a proposal out there that everybody could look at. But, you know, again, I don't wanna necessarily speak for anyone, but, you know, if, if, if I'm, if, if you're selling me a product and I say, I want 7,000 of them, you're gonna give me a certain price. If I come to you and say, well, I'm only gonna, I only wanna buy 3,000 from you and I wanna buy 3,000 from him, and I wanna buy 1,000 from her, I still get my 7,000, you're gonna give me a slightly different price because you're not gonna sell as many. It's, that's, that's all part of the factoring.
I'm confused, but that's probably because I'm, I don't work where you work, Bill.
You like my job.
I'm glad you do. I guess the, the, several things I'm having trouble understanding is, generally, when something seems a little complicated, usually the best solution is the simplest. And so that's, that's one thing I'm wondering. And then I'm also wondering how we'll realize any of these cost savings through this rebidding process where we're sharing it. My guess is we won't get those cost savings, but we don't really know that.
We won't know unless we rebid it.
If the volume's not as high, I wouldn't think that.
Right. We really wouldn't know. So.
You can go get on the microphone, sorry.
I mean, you kind of reiterate what, what Bill was saying is that, what this option would allow to happen is that the city continues to produce material. They don't have to, well, you were talking about the numbers going up and down. What causes that is when they, the digesters we're talking about, this material goes in here and essentially it has to cook for so many days before it meets the standard to be able to be land applied. What happens is during the winter months, a lot of times, this material is coming in so fast, they can't hold it that long. So therefore, it doesn't meet those standards. If they have the option of doing either one, landfilling or land applying, they don't have to worry about that. They can keep operating the plant like it needs to be operated. It comes in, if we don't have time to hold it there, no big deal, send it to the landfill. If we do have time to hold it there, they can send it to recycling, to the land application. It, it, that way, it takes that operational difficulty off the plant by not having to, like you said, juggle. And you have these, these numbers going like this. And it makes, it's an operational issue at times with the plant when they have high loading that typically comes in during the winter months. So, and our price is not going to change. And I understand, you're exactly right. Typically, in most situations, as volume goes up, price typically comes down. That's, that's the way it works a lot. Our costs are generally fixed here. I mean, we have the equipment, we have permitted sites. The landfill, I cannot speak for them. I mean, I, I don't know. But typically, if we do a project, our company does jobs like this all over the state and several other states in the southeast. If I'm going to clean out a, a pond or a lagoon at a wastewater plant, which we do a lot of that, typically, as that size goes up, my cost comes down because I have fixed, I have costs to get there and get set up to do this job. This is a little different. I mean, we're here, we're right down the road. Bill's gonna call, we've got some this month, we don't have some next month. It doesn't really matter much to us. So there's not going to be, I guess when we turn our, if we were to rebid this and turn this in, you're not gonna see our price go up 20%. That's not going to, that's not gonna happen. I cannot speak for the landfill, but just food for thought again. Thank you.
One thing from a legal perspective is that the city does not wanna get notices of violation from the Division of Water for being, for not being in compliance with the KPDS permit. So if that's a factor that the commission wants to consider, that's a good factor.
Commissioner Hen?
Yes, just to say that at this current point where we are, I'm actually, I depend on your expertise and your staffs. And so the recommendation, you know, I'm more leaning toward that direction, but I do have a question.
Yes.
Because this contract is good for a year.
One year.
And, and that gives more time for all these different, other additional things. But at the bottom, it says the contract does allow for renewal up to five years.
Correct.
Would that not allow us to, like in a year from now, if we wanted to look at different ways, would, would that particular language make that not possible?
Oh, absolutely, that would be possible. The, the other, the other thing in the contract, and Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, because I know you will. There is also, I believe it's a 30-day, we can cancel any contract with 30 days written notice. So if we enter into a contract in six months from now, we wanna rebid this, you know, if, if that contract is with Republic, which is, is my current recommendation, and we want to, three, six, nine months or a year from now, we can either terminate the contract and rebid it or we can at the end of the year, put out a new bid package rather than renewing the contract with Republic. Absolutely. And, and if I may say, frankly, I like that idea better than, than rejecting these and, and rebidding because, you know, trying to put a new bid package together and get it on the street and bid in, in a very short period of time may be tough.
I guess the question I would have, if, if we went along with Commissioner Hen's suggestion, one of the things when you put something off to the next year, in other words, to give the commission more information along the lines of some of these questions and to, and to look at it from a different perspective, we tend to forget it. So, you know, I'll forget it, I'll just tell you that. So if we go this route, what do we need to do to make sure, before this comes on the consent calendar again, that, that we've actually looked at it?
Well, there's, there's several ways to approach this. Obviously, I can give you a, a monthly update of where we are within the process. But the, the, the true threshold would be is this time next year, you know, this is a one-year with a, with a, with an annual renewal. This time next year, when I bring this to the city commission, the answer is, where are we with all this other stuff with rebidding and blah, blah, blah? Why aren't you there yet?
I'm sure we'd be happy to ask that question.
I know how shy some of you are.
Yes, sir.
But like I say, you know, I, I frankly would be a lot more comfortable with, with awarding a contract that, you know, was a year contract. Again, we could cancel if we had to. Unless it was an overriding reason to, I probably would not wanna do that. But probably rebid this, I think this went out in, was it July? Rebid this in late July, I believe it was, is when we hit the streets with this. I can't remember, but, but probably rebid this about June or July of next year, just like we did this year.
Okay. Does any, any more commissioners have a question for Bill? Or for anyone else on this topic?
I move that we accept the recommendation that came forward.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Mr. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Hen?
No.
Mayor Perchin Roach?
Yes. Mr. City Attorney, if you wanna go to the next 10.1. Appreciate that.
To authorize a memorandum of agreement for support services between the Frankfurt Police Department and the Center of Behavioral Health and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
I'll move it to option.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Hen?
Yes.
Mayor Perchin Roach?
Yes. Any other new business?
I'll move it to adjournment.
I've got one.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to know if you wanted to discuss a special meeting to deal with the buffalo trace issue.
Oh, that was supposed to be at 5 o'clock, is that right, on Monday?
We're at 1 o'clock.
I think the key question for us is, is it 1 o'clock or 5 o'clock?
Oh.
We have another one at 2 o'clock. With Mr. Heritage.
Is an hour gonna be long enough to take care of that business? Buffalo trace?
I have no idea.
They shoot for 5.
Agree. What's everybody else's thing?
Agree.
Looks like 5. On, on another new business item, I would like the, like the commission's support for doing an evaluation for the city manager. And I think we just need to, if we're all on board with that, just need to go ahead and tell him and then he can get with us on the process and the time and that type of thing. We can get together on that. Is everybody all right with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other new business?
Yeah, I'm gonna use adjournment.
Give me a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, seeing none. You can go, Chief.